It is 7:30. We'll call the February 22, 2022, meeting of the Little Falls, regular meeting of the Little Falls City Council to order. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law and herein place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Lundberg. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of February 7, 2022, and the regular meeting of February 7, 2022. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Starley. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 106267 through 106334 totaling $602,068.18. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. Award, Our Town 56345. Sharing the Vision, Engaging the Community. Five Wings Art Council. Accept and approve. What is the wish of the council?
I move to accept and approve Our Town 56345 Vision and Engaging the Community.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda. Application of exempt permit and temporary on-sale liquor license. Holy Family Church Heritage Days, June 12, 2022. Approve. Application to conduct off-site gambling. Minnesota Fishing Museum, December 4, 2022. Approve. Day of caring participation. Approve. Economic Development Authority Minutes, February 2, 2022. Receive. Heritage Preservation Commission Minutes, February 2, 2022. Receive. Housing and Redevelopment Authority Minutes, January 2, 2022. Receive. Morrison County Chaplaincy Agreement. Approve. Parade, walk, run, bike permit. Two-Right Bike Shop, May 21, 2022. Approve. Police Report, January 2, 2022. Receive. Public Works Report, January 2, 2022. Receive. Wastewater Report, January 2, 2022. Receive. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Lundberg. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearings and lettings. Public hearings. Resolution 2022-15. Order and public improvement 397. Gale Drive and call for plans and specifications. Adopt. Greg.
Good evening, Mr. President. This evening, we have three public hearings for our 2022 projects. The first one that we're looking at is Gale Drive. After that, we'll be looking at Circle Drive, and then finally, Fourth Street East. So, like I mentioned, we're looking at the Gale Drive project as a city project 397. To give you an idea where the project is located, it's in the Riverwood area, so right off of Admin Street, going around all the way to Riverwood. We did receive a petition for this project. There's a new home being built out there that would look like to hook up to city water and sewer. The road itself has a PESA rating of three, which, if you recall, is in poor condition. There is no water main, no sewer, and no storm sewer at that location. Just a picture in regards to what the current area looks like. There's some cracking in the road as far as the pavement condition. I will note, and we'll get into that a little bit later, the trees on the left, we will need to do some clearing and grubbing in regards to those. But it looks like the ones on the right, which is on the west side of the road, those should be okay. But in this stretch, we will be looking at some clearing and grubbing on the project. Looking at the improvements that we're proposing for this stretch, we're looking at eight inch sanitary sewer to serve the area. Sanitary sewer service will be stubbed out to the property line. Six-inch water main. Water service is stubbed out to the property line. Twenty-two-foot rural section with a swale, which is similar to what the width is there now. The one thing you'll notice is we will be putting in a swale, which is basically a one-foot ditch in that area to hold the storm water in the rains, as well as the spring runoff. Five-inch aggregate base, and then three and a half inches of blacktop. The opinion of probable costs. Construction, we're looking at $449,731. Contingency is roughly around 10%, $44,973. Engineering at $116,930 for a total project cost of $611,634. Looking at the funding of the project, it's close to a 50-50 split. Assessments coming at 49.4%, which would be $301,894, with the remaining being city cost. Looking at the assessments, these are similar to what we saw back in 2021. A residential rural front footage would be at $18 per foot. Sanitary sewer, $32 per foot. Service line, four-inch, at $1,100 each. Water main at $32 per foot, and a new water service, one-inch water service line, is $1,900 each. The city does intend to sell general obligation bonds. If the city approves this segment, it would be combined with other projects. Property owners who are disabled or who meet income guidelines and are 65 years of age or older may apply for a deferment, as well as members of the Minnesota National Guard or other military reserves as defined in 190.05 subdivision 5B and C. We do have the affidavit of publication and the affidavit of mailing. We did receive two letters in regards to the project. I did forward those before the meeting. So, looking at the project, kind of the schedule, what we're looking at, so obviously, tonight's February 22, we have our public hearing. We'd be looking at design in February and March. Advertise for bids in March. Open up bids March 31. And then, construction would be in 2022, is in 2023, finalizing that with our special assessment hearing in October. And then, the construction would be completed in spring of 2023. The reason you see that construction is in '22 as well as '23, originally, we were planning on doing it in 2022, but after speaking with suppliers, it's looking like there's about a four-month lead time on pipe and material, so we're anticipating that at the end of the year is when we're going to start seeing activity, even though we bid it early in March. We won't see anything until the end of the construction season in order to do that. And then, the following season, we finalize the turf establishment. Any questions on the project itself? I did mention the tree removal along Gale Drive. And then, we will be looking at doing some construction in Riverwood itself, where we tie into the sanitary sewer on both north and south legs of Gale Drive. That's in order to get that sewer deep enough. The lots on Gale Drive, especially the riverside, they do extend quite a bit to the west, and so, we want to make sure that we get that sewer as deep as we possibly can to minimize any impact to those folks, so that they can use that service line basically as a gravity, as opposed to a lift pump. So, we are looking at construction in Riverwood, which will impact some of the traffic on Riverwood, but we'll have to detour it for a while. But we're getting those as deep as we can for those folks.
I did want to ask, because I think this would be the same as other projects up there, that people would not have to pay the assessment until they decide to connect.
Correct. That would be the recommendation of the staff, and then ultimately, the council would make that decision. But similar to other projects in the Riverwood area, where they already have a well, they already have a septic system that's operational, we recognize that there's an investment for that, and so, we'd be recommending that the assessments would be postponed until they hook up to those utilities, which would basically set them off to the side until they hook up. So, it could be a year, it could be five years, it could be 10 years. That's what we've done on other ones, and that would be our recommendation again on this one.
Any other questions for Greg? We should have mentioned before opening a public hearing, so we will be taking comments. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand or stand, and I'll recognize you, and we'll have you come up to the podium. You can speak for two minutes. We ask you that you be germane and concise. And to begin with, we need you to give your name and address for the record. You can speak a second time if you need to, after we give other people a chance. Would anyone like to speak?
My name is Brenda Mcahan, and I am on Circle Drive, but it is the same concept. When you said you could hold off on paying for it till you hook up, is that interest-free?
It is.
It is? Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, Brenda, could you spell your last name, please?
Mcahan, and I'm at 14752 Circle Drive.
14752?
Circle Drive. But that was just the interest-free. That's all I wanted to know.
We'll have a comment time for the Circle Drive portion shortly.
I just thought it would be the same area for people. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Jamie Sunder. I live at 17699 Gale Drive. I have some questions. We've lived there for eight years. On our property, our septic system is out front, and our drain field is right along where they're marking that they're going to be digging, as well as our sprinklers that run through that area. What exactly are we supposed to do as far as that?
So, the sprinklers, you would need to remove those.
So, you want me to pay extra, is what you're telling me?
The sprinklers would get impacted during construction. The work that we do is in the right-of-way, so it's about a 66-foot wide corridor that we, that the city has for public use. So, whether it's telephone, cable, gas, utilities, or city utilities, sewer and water, they use that corridor for that purpose. And so, we would disrupt basically all of that stretch, just because of the depth of the sewer, the location of the water, the ditches, all of that stuff, is how that would go.
And what happens if they damage my drain field?
So, the drain field, if you know exactly where that's at, then we would work with you in terms of identifying that to keep them out of that area, to make sure that it doesn't get damaged.
It's actually right where they marked for digging. And we also have some trees that are pretty close to there, so if they're digging through that, it's going to damage those trees, and we'll lose those five trees or six trees up front.
If I can, I'll meet you after the meeting to find out exactly where that's at.
Okay.
Just so that we don't impact it, so.
Okay. I would also like to state that I'm opposed. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, my name is Mike Rocco. I live at 17763 Gale Drive. So, I have a question. Does one person dictate us to get sewer and water in there? Do we have to have it just because one does?
So, the way the process starts, it's through a petition. So, it can start with one resident or a number of residents, where we've got on other ones. At that point, then the council receives it and then decides whether to move forward with the process. There's a number of different steps in the process. Receiving the petition is the first step, and then there's a feasibility, and then it ultimately gets to this point to dictate whether or not the project is actually going to move forward. So, it can take one. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, but that's how the process starts.
So, just with one, we have to do this regardless, you're saying? Put the sewer and water in?
Regardless, but ultimately, the council would make that decision to move forward or not.
Because the problem some of us have as homeowners out there, I have over a 300-foot dig from the road to my house. In order to get sewer and water in, I will have to remove my sidewalk and my front step. My basement is all finished. I'd have to jackhammer the floor up or remove my steps. So, I got the cost of what you're already charging me to put this in now, or later, or pay, plus the digging fee to install this, plus to rip up my basement, repair my sprinkler systems, because we all have sprinkler systems. So, we're looking at pretty good cost, and I can't sell my house if I have this on my taxes. Correct?
No, that's not true. That's a negotiated point between the buyer and the seller. We've had a lot of folks, realtors, call in regards to other areas, because this isn't the only area that has postponed assessments. Another point is, we're not requiring those out there to hook up. Once the septic system fails, at that point, the septic would have, or the sewer would have to be hooked up, but not until then. We have seen, you know, again, negotiated between the buyer and seller. If you sell the house, sometimes they require you to hook up, sometimes they don't. That's a negotiated point between the buyer and seller.
Because my big issue is my sewer is up front. Like you said, my water comes in on the backside, on the riverside. I have no access to get my water back to the backside without digging up my whole yard and going across my driveway. So, I do have an issue with that. And I know there's a few others in our area that, like Rings, they're on the corner. They have quite a dig, too, that they have to get sewer and water to their house if they ever have to. They're older people than most of us in our area. So, I'm just wondering what's going to happen with all that.
So, there is deferment options out there. So, if you're 65 years of age or older, and you do meet certain income guidelines, then there's the potential for a deferment. Definitely check with staff. Wendy Zilk would be the one to talk to in regards to that, whether or not they would qualify for it. That's if they hook up, let's say tomorrow, once the project is done, then that would kick in, the deferment would kick in. Otherwise, if you don't hook up, then the assessment just stays there until you hook up. So, if everything's going fine with your well and your septic, there wouldn't be any, anything.
Yeah, because there are other issues, being these people built and bought this lot, and then our taxes are all going to go up, just like everybody else. So, we're going to run into a big issue out there with taxes. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Would someone else like to speak? Go ahead.
My name is Regan Bird. I live at 17687 Gale Drive. Moved there two years ago. I got this letter in the mail for $17,000, and the second page says it can be paid over 15 years at 4% interest. So, that comes out to about $1,500 a month, a year, on top of our taxes. So, I paid $232,000 for this house. Here's my current taxes. I already paid $4,200 a year. So, you're telling me with this assessment and my current taxes, I'm going to owe $6,000 a year in taxes for a house I paid $232,000 for? Does that make sense to anybody? This just, this project is way too expensive for something we don't need, and I oppose. Thank you.
So, I would add that if you hook up to city services at that point, then those would go on. If you don't hook up, then they don't go on your taxes.
You can't even sell the house, because at that point, who's going to pay a $250,000 house, $6,000 with taxes a year? Who's going to buy it? Who's going to buy a $250,000 house that owes six grand in taxes a year? Anybody? It doesn't make any sense at all. It's way too much money.
Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I've been told that we don't have to pay the assessment unless we hook up. But if something, or sell. And once something happens to either our drain field or to our septic system, we're required to hook up. So, at that point, if they are digging and they damage my septic system and my drain field, am I going to be required to hook up? And who's going to be responsible for paying that? Because I don't want to hook up. On top of that, I was also told, once you hook up, there may be an additional fee for hooking up on top of this $17,000, $18,000 that we're already being charged. So, it's like another, like $20,000 or something like that, based on the lot size that I have. So, at that point, I mean, it doesn't seem feasible to me to even think about hooking up. Part of the reason that we moved out there was with the understanding that we weren't on city water, and we were not going to be forced to hook up. And... Go ahead.
I was going to say, and that's still true. So, until you hook up, those assessments would be, would come due at that time or go onto the taxes. You could still be on your well and septic until the septic system fails.
And if the digger hits my septic system that's right there in the front yard...
And that's where I'd like to meet with you and see where that's at, just to figure that out, so that we don't damage it. Obviously, we don't want to damage your septic system. That's not what we're looking to do here. So, I want to meet with you to be able to lot that out.
Honestly, I mean, if all of us have to move our sprinkler systems and have to pay somebody to come out and reroute all of that, then the people who are wanting this should have to pay for everybody to reroute their systems, or the city should have to pay for it. Because honestly, I mean, it was there when we bought the place. We didn't put it in. It's not like we ran it where it's at. So, that should be something to take into consideration, is that everyone who has sprinkler systems there, anything that's in that way of being damaged, we shouldn't be responsible for having to pay to move it.
I will touch on one of your items you had mentioned in regards to the assessment. So, the number that you have in your hand, and it's different for everybody, based on the size of the lot and whatnot, that's to get the sewer and water stubbed to the property line. From the property line into the house, that's between yourself and then a contractor to bring it in.
Which is an extra $20,000.
Dollar amount? I don't know. I don't ever see those dollar amounts. I wouldn't have a clue on what those would be.
I've done the research, and I've called places, and that's what I've been told, for the size of our lot and for where everything is situated, and to run it from the street to there, that's what we would end up having to pay extra, on top of this almost $18,000 that we're already being required to pay if we have to hook up.
So, that's in regards to that. Like I said, the properties on the west side of the road, which are the riverside, those are the longest. We wanted to get the sewer as deep as possible to be able to serve it, to minimize the possibility of having a lift pump. I know a lot of folks already have a lift pump for their septic system.
They don't.
But, again, we wanted to go with gravity and not have to have a lift pump in there for those folks. I don't remember the other question. Oh, the sprinkler system and such in the right-of-way. We see this quite often, honestly, on pretty much all of our projects, that folks put sprinklers in the right-of-way. When they put it in the right-of-way, they put it there at risk, in the event that any utility, whether it's Center Point, the city Little Falls, anybody goes in there to put utilities, they have the potential to damage it. They're not supposed to be there. I mean, they can be there, but they're at risk of getting damaged, unfortunately.
And again, since we were not the people who put that there, we bought the house eight years ago, and they were already in there, which was also a selling point, because then, you know, it's better for our lawn and for that area. It's kept up nicely. And if they damage that, and we have to, I mean, I just don't think that we should need to pay for that to move it. On top of everything else, all of the other hidden fees that we're going to get hit with, once we have to hook up.
Two minutes are up. Thank you. You can.
So, Greg, what is our fee for getting a permit to have this, let's say, if we had sewer and water stubbed into our house? What do we pay for a fee?
As far as the plumbing permit?
Yeah.
It's a percentage, and I don't even know. David calculates those.
So, there's, for the work that's done outside, a water permit's $30. A sewer permit is $30. And then, for the inside work, then you take out a plumbing permit, and that's $46.
So, is there also a whack-and-sack fee that we get?
Right. So, then the sack-and-whack fees, which are the sewer accessibility and water accessibility charges, are $700 apiece. So, from the city, you have the assessments, the sewer and water accessibility, and then the permit fees, depending on if you hook up to water, sewer.
Right. So, that gets added to the price that we're already going to pay for sewer and water to come through there. That's part of, that's not part of the fee.
Correct. That's not part of the assessment.
That's not part of the assessment, correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Go ahead.
So, you keep saying this is optional, but as soon as those stubs are there, it's no longer optional as soon as we have a failure?
No. Actually, the city code, it says within five, if the sewer is within 500 feet, if your septic system fails, you have to hook up.
If the stubs are there?
Nope. Regardless, if it's within 500 feet. So, if one of the septic systems on Gale Drive fails, we'd be in the same situation. They'd have to hook up.
So, no matter what, at some point, I'm going to have 15 years with the $6,000 a year taxes, is what you're telling me with this?
At some point...
$6,000 a year?
At some point...
For a house I paid $230,000 for? That is insane. How is the price that high?
So, at some point, yes, the sewer and water would be in there, and only until that septic system fails would you be required to hook up to the sewer, not the wall.
And then, I'd owe six grand a year for 15 years.
The taxes are going to vary. We don't set the taxes amount. Those are actually by the county, but...
I wouldn't even be able to sell the place. You're saying it doesn't hinder our sales, but it does. Who's going to buy a $250,000 house that owes six grand a year in taxes?
No.
Who? That doesn't make any sense.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Bobby Lokenen, and I live at 17781 Gale Drive. Want to speak just to this, you know, on the figures that we saw, we've split it about 50-50, the half the city, half the landowners. And I'm not sure who's in favor of this here. I would speak against this. And, you know, the $300,000 bill is a lot for one new home. Is there a creative solution we can have if he has a sewer already? Can he do a sewer? Can he do a well, just like everyone else on the whole street? Is that a possible thing we could suggest?
Sure. And we currently have that, actually. What our current assessment policy is, the left pays 33% a third, the right pays a third, and then the city would pay a third. Obviously, that increases the cost to the assessments. Right now, it's at 50-50, so 25% the left, 25% the right, and cities picking up the bulk of it or at 50% the remainder of it. So, we've already backed it off from what our policy currently indicates. And going back to the other point, as far as a creative solution in regards to that, if your septic fails, and you only want to hook up to your septic system, then you can hook up to your septic system. You could still have your well operational and not have that component of it. We don't have a requirement to hook up to the city water within city Little Falls.
Correct. If you hook up, if you hook up, if your septic fails, you can hook up to sewer only.
Correct.
You can keep your, if your water is there, you can keep your water.
Yes.
You won't have to connect to the city water. But if your septic fails, then you do have to connect to the city services if services are within 500 feet of your property.
Just the only other statement I would have, I would agree with the gentleman behind it, is it is a lot. My septic is behind my house, so to get to it, you'd probably have to tear up the part of the garage, and whatever, that's what it is. But just, I'm kind of opposed to that. So, I'd like to offer the creative solution. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I would just want to speak against that. So, thank you for your time.
Greg, doesn't he have that guy that petitioned for sewer and water, he already has, you allowed him to put in a holding tank, right?
Only a holding tank.
And he has a drum well right now, too?
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
So, why can't he use that now?
He needs to come to the podium.
You'll have to go to the podium, but...
He's already been up there twice.
Would anyone else like to speak? No, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Matt Sunder. I also live at 17699 Gale Drive. I had some questions in regards to the timing of the project and other services that you said that may or may not be disrupted. Do you know if the, whether or not the gas, water, or not water, obviously not at this point, but the gas or the power or phone service, cable service, any of those will be disrupted or anything like that? Because currently, I work out of my home, so that would have a significant impact on my income-earning ability.
If you're done...
Go ahead and answer that question. It's fine.
So, a lot of the other utility companies will need to relocate their utilities. I know most of the time, like Power, for instance, they're able to make the switch live, so they'll put the new one in, and then they'll cut the other one off without you ever noticing that there's a change. one off without you ever noticing that there's a change. I don't know how they do that for, for gas. Same way with, with the telephone, they'll be able to do that live, so you won't even notice it. But they will be relocating their utilities basically to the edge of the right of way line. Because right now, it's in the bottom of the ditch. You probably saw the flags and stuff out there. But yes, those are, those will have to get relocated as well.
Okay. Second question is in regards to the comment that you had made about the, the ditch that you guys will be putting in. Currently, we don't have a ditch in our yard, and our, since we live on the west side of Gale Drive, there is no stormwater system out in our area. So stormwater all drains into our grass or runs off into the river at this point. Are you saying that you're going to re-landscape our entire yard? Or, I mean, what, what's the purpose of the ditch if, if there currently isn't one?
So the purpose of the ditch, if you drive around Riverwood in the springtime, give it a month and a half and you'll see it. There's quite a bit of water standing on the edge of the road. You're right, there's no stormwater or storm sewer system in that area. So by having a one-foot ditch, it gives that water a place to go off of the roadway and through there. We did that on a couple other projects in the, in the Riverwood area. It just gives the stormwater, or the stormwater a place to go while it infiltrates into the ground. And all of that would be within, within the right of way as well.
And how much, I mean, how wide of a ditch is this going to be? I mean, we have a riding lawnmower. So I mean, is it, is it going to be like a one-foot ditch that's this wide?
No.
Where my riding lawnmower isn't going to actually be able to.
Your riding lawnmower would be able to go.
Am I going to be scalping my lawn in the process and?
It's about a foot deep, over about a 10-foot area. It's not very noticeable.
And then last question is, assuming that you guys approve this project, which I'm opposed, what is the actual timeline? Are you guys going to tear it up in, in October and then we're going to be driving on, on dirt and crud all winter long because you guys don't finish it? Or are you guys actually going to just wait until the spring and actually do it all in, in one fell swoop and have a less of an impact on us?
So we have three segments that we'd be looking at. 14th Street, Gale Drive, and Circle Drive would be, if those move forward, those would be the ones that would be combined together. Looking at the various things, 14th Street, that's, the soil over there is pretty bad. So they're going to want to do that one right away, just because if it rains, that one's going to get impacted the most. Circle and Gale, those both have good soils. Those are in sand, so they're not as impacted by, by the weather. They can work later into the, into the fall with those. A lot of times in October, we don't get a lot of drying days. And so that's, you know, later on is when I kind of see those. I don't think they'll get all of them done. That's why we have 2022 and 2023. So either Circle or Gale would be in the fall, and then the next one would be in the spring to get that completed. Realistically, if they do one of them in the fall, they're probably not going to get grass turf established in the fall, just because it's late in the year. And so that would occur the, the following spring is when they would be able to do that. But as far as driveway, driving surfaces, that'll get back to, to blacktop. You know, driveways and everything back to, to driving so that, you know, they.
And as far as being able to pour concrete, because right now, our driveway is concrete, and we were told that the, the end of the, the end of the driveway, when you guys rip it all up, is going to be replaced with, with like materials.
Correct. It'll be replaced with like materials.
Will the concrete actually be able to cure properly, or will it start to crack out in the spring?
No. So we would, they'll, they'll be able to time it so that they can pour that concrete when it'll cure. So you've got to protect it from freezing, but we don't get too late into the year where it, where it'll fail. We want to make sure that it's a good product through, you know, through a number of years. So that'll be protected.
I guess those are all my questions at this time.
Go ahead.
My name's Tony Bergman, and I live at 17815 Gale Drive. I guess I'm in agreement with everyone behind me. I think my biggest, not concern, but I, well, yes, concern, is as I've learned a lot of the stuff here and whatnot, I'm just curious about how a permit was given out to one person on Yale Drive. We were told when we purchased three years ago that if our septic was, wasn't in compliance, that we would have to hook up. So I understood that point. But now that I look back on it, it wasn't even stubbed in at that point. So what would have happened if, I think maybe you answered the question earlier, but if it wouldn't have, if our, if it wouldn't have passed, what would have happened to us in the corner?
So in, in that instance, you would have had to petition to the city to extend sewer and water to our own Gale Drive to get sewer and water available to you. The sewer would be the one that you'd be looking at. Whether or not you do water is, would totally be up to you. But we'd be in the same situation. If the septic system fails, you'd have to connect up to the, to the sewer at that point.
So is that what the person on Gale did?
Yes.
And he was allowed then to put in a holding tank?
Correct.
And a well?
Correct.
Would I have had that option if I would have contacted you earlier? Could I have put in a holding tank just to make it?
So the holding tank is, my understanding, they wanted to, you know, have Christmas, even though they're not even close to that at this point. But they wanted to be able to have Christmas at it. And so they had to put in a holding tank to be able to use it temporarily and then connect at, as soon as services are available.
So that will be removed, then?
Be removed, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Would anyone else like to speak? If they have service. Then at 8:06, we will close our public hearing. What is the wish of the council?
One point, Mr. President, because this is a petitioned project with, with less than that 35%, we do need seven-eighths vote in order to make the project move forward.
Okay.
Sorry. Because this is a petition project with less than 35%, we do need seven-eighths vote in order for the project to move forward. You're looking for a motion, Brad?
I am.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-15, Order in Public Improvement 397.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Goschek. Discussion.
Yeah, Greg, how many res, how many residents are on Gale Drive? How many houses are there?
I think 13, right around there.
And how many, how many here are, how many different households are here right now that are opposed to this?
Yeah.
Well.
Councilmember.
That's not.
Not appropriate.
It is for me. So I know what kind of, you know, if we're getting people that are opposed to a project, and it's a majority of the people, it's going to have an effect on how I, how I'm going to vote.
Greg, Mr. President, if I could. Greg, so what happens to this new building if this fails? Does he?
Right now, they have just a, a tank, no drain field in there. So I don't know at that point.
Or if somebody's septic goes down?
If somebody's septic goes down, we'd be in the same situation. They would have to petition to, to bring it in and have sewer and water extended at that point. Then we'd have to go through the same process.
Hey Greg, earlier you mentioned something. If they, their system fails.
Mm-hmm.
And there's, and it's over 500 feet to any possible hookup or anything, can they fix their septic if there's nowhere?
Nope. City, city code does not allow that. We just spent $20 million on a waste treatment plant to treat sewage. That's what it's for. And so if their septic system fails, the intent is that they would hook up to city sewer at that point. And, you know, like we did on other areas in Riverwood, the compromise so that people aren't saddled with that assessment, because we know that they put in the investment for the septic system and the well, is to postpone it until they hook up. So if their septic system is fine, they don't have an assessment. But once it fails, at that point, they hook up and then they, the assessment kicks in. It's not getting cheaper, I'll tell you that. We saw the prices from last year to this year, and it's going to keep going up. We know that.
Mr. President, so right now, if a resident's septic system fails, does that property and house become inhabitable then?
If it's within.
If they can't, if they can't repair?
So they have to pump it until sewer is available. So it generally takes us six months to, to get through this process before we get a petition, before we dig. It takes six months timeframe. And so they would have to pump that septic system until sewer is available to them to connect.
What's, one other question. What, what about, so that house or that property that now has a temporary holding tank, their, their only option is to pump that tank out every, whenever that has to?
They're not even living in there right now. If you, if you drive by it, it just has the walls up. It's not finished on the exterior by any stretch of the imagination. They were anticipating to be farther along than what they were, but they're not living in there. So they don't, they don't have to pump it just yet.
But they would if it were full.
Yes. Yep.
And can you have it temporary permanently?
No. No.
So the city has an obligation to give people water and sewer when they build a house. It's our obligation to do that. It's a, I think it's a great compromise that the city council came up with in the past year, that if you're not, if you don't need it, you don't have to pay for it. But at the time that you need it, it's available for you, and then you have to pay for it. So it's our obligation. We, we kind of have to give people city sewer and water when they ask for it.
And you don't have to wait for a year to hook up.
Right.
For it to be installed.
Right. And then when your septic systems fail and your wells fail, guess what? It's there for you.
I can't even sell my house.
I have an assessment, too. You know, it happens.
I would just like to note that the systems out there, I don't know to what degree, are starting to fail, which is why we did Oak Street last year. Somebody sold their house. The septic system didn't pass, and so we had to do the same thing for Oak Street and then extended it. Park Place? What is it? I can't remember.
It was another block on.
Another block, yeah. So, I mean, they might be good now, but like I said, they're, they're failing out there.
We call cars every two years. That's why we do it.
Any other discussion?
Take care of it. You want it, you do it.
Call her, please.
Lil Jegrin?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
No.
Fails.
Hansen?
Yes.
Dusick?
Yes.
Fails.
Resolution 2022-16, Order in Public Improvement 397, Circle Drive and Call for Plans and Specifications. Adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next public hearing that we are looking at, sorry, did you open up the public hearing?
We need to, yes.
All right. The next public hearing that we're looking at is Circle Drive. To give you an idea where that project is at, you can see over here, we've got Park Place, kind of in the middle of the screen. It's in the middle of the screen. We've got Circle Drive coming around, which connects back up to Circle Drive. That's just north of the, the new ball fields that are up there. This is a petition project. We did receive over 35% of the resident signatures. The PESA rating on this area is six, which is good condition. There is no water main, no sanitary sewer, no storm sewer on that stretch. Looking at the project need, as you can see, we've got some cracks in there, but all in all, it's not terrible shape for the, for the pavement. We're looking at eight-inch sanitary sewer throughout that, that area. We're looking at sewer services stubbed out to the property line, six-inch water main, water services stubbed out to the property line, 24-foot rural section with a swale, five inches of aggregate basin, three and a half inches of blacktop on top. Looking at the project costs, construction comes in at $643,156 is what we're estimating, contingency at 10%. And then engineering at $167,220 for a total project cost, $874,692. Looking at the assessments on this, we're looking at $342,384, which is about 39.1%, with the city picking up the remainder, for a total project cost of $874,692. One thing to note, the reason that that one is so much different than the other one, going back to the beginning here, sorry, the sewer for this, this project, we would have to extend it off from Pine Avenue through the back over here in order to get proper depth. Again, we want to make sure that folks don't have to use a, a pump in order to get it into the sewer. We're looking to make sure that they get gravity. There is one house in the northwest corner of that circle that I don't think we're going to be able to, to serve, just because of how shallow it is. But the stub on Park and the stub on Circle is not very deep. And so we want it to get as deep as possible. So we're looking to go around the back and then one of the yards come through an easement and then serve both north and south of that stretch. So that's why that one's so much more expensive than the other one. But we didn't feel that the residents would necessarily need to pick up the cost for that, just because it should have been deeper on, on that other stretch. Looking at the assessments rates, these are the same ones that we presented on Gale Drive. Front footage at $18 per foot, side footage is at $9 per foot. After, one thing to note, after 150 feet of side footage, it does go back to the front footage rate. So those that have long side yards, they do, they will see both front side and another one that would be front. So anything over 150 feet of side footage does get the front rate. Sanitary sewer is at $32 per foot. The service line is $1,100 each. The water main at $32 per foot, and the water service line is at $1,900 apiece. Again, the city doesn't intend to sell general obligation bonds for the project. If the council approves this segment, it'd be combined with other projects. Anyone that's 65 years or older, older, may qualify for deferment. And folks that are Minnesota National Guard or other military reserves under Section 190.05 subdivision 5B or C may also qualify for a deferment. Same time schedule that we were talking about before, tonight's February 22nd. Design would be February and March. We'd be looking at advertisement for bids in, in March with opening bids the end of March, construction in 2022 and completion in 2023. And we'd be looking at having our special assessment hearing in September of this year with project completion in 2023. Any questions on the project?
Same thing. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand. I'll acknowledge you, and you have two minutes with your name and your address to begin with, please. Would anyone like to speak?
John McMahon, MCMHAN, 14752, Circle Drive. If there's trees or other objects in the easement and they need to be removed, is that the city going to pay for that, or do we have to pay for it before you guys come through?
So we'd be looking at the easement that's going through the backyards. We'd be looking at directional drilling that. So we wouldn't be disrupting trees or shrubs or fences in that stretch that's back there. So that would be, we'd be looking at directional drilling. Now, trees that are in the right of way, those would be removed. Generally, we do have a bid item in our, in our project with removal of trees, clearing and grubbing. And so the contractor does take those down. If the property owner wants them, they definitely can. But we have a, we have provisions in the contract in order to, to take that down.
Okay. And also, you mentioned directional drilling. Can we get a permit to directional drill, like under our house, for the sewer and water?
Unfortunately, we can't. There's two different codes. One is the Tennessee Standards, which guideline, which are the codes within the right of way. There's the Minnesota Plumbing Code, which applies to the plumbing in the, in the private property. And so when you're in the private property portion of it, the Plumbing Code kicks in. It does not allow for that type of, of construction. Only, unfortunately, within the, the right of way is where that is, is allowed because of the two different codes. Unfortunately, it's nothing that we can control or have any control over. It's just the way that the state has the two set up.
So like these other gentlemen mentioned about going under driveways and going in your basement, you literally got to tear it out then?
That's my understanding of the Plumbing Code, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
Thank you. Bob Kempinik, 14762, Circle Drive. I've got a question on, I guess, on a couple of questions. Number one, on well, there's quite a few, I don't know how many homes in our, on Circle Drive where we have a sandpoint well. If we tear up Circle Drive and go down and put in the water and sewer and redo the street, what's going to happen to ensure us that we have? what's going to happen to ensure us that we have water? I had zero communication on anything until I got the notice of the hearing, so I don't know anything about any of this.
So what we do at the beginning of construction is they go to find out exactly where the, the wells are at. If you have a deep well, then you wouldn't be affected. If you have a sandpoint, then there's a potential that, that you would be affected during the construction of the, of the project. They would basically bring temporary water to that house, you know, a line from one of the hydrants to there, to make sure that you have water during construction. After that, the water table would come back and then you'd be able to use your, your sandpoint again. Most people in the area, you're right, they either have a well or a, or a sandpoint. The sandpoints are really going to be the ones that are susceptible to it, but I don't anticipate any issues with, with that, just because we've, we've done projects in the area already and we've had good communication with folks along there to see where their, where their, their infrastructure is at and then how deep it is.
I've had zero communication so far, so.
Yep.
It's a concern.
Yep.
Also, when we talk, if septic fails, yes, we need to hook up to city sanitary. But what if our well fails? Can we have a new well drilled?
You can.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Joe Dabitch, 16997, Circle Drive, Little Falls, Minnesota. I wish I would have your bill, because mine is $26,000. That's what, that's what that, my assessment would be, $26,000. If he's, if his taxes are going up, what do you think mine are going to do? Also, I'd like to be able to find out, I'm looking at this unit cost. What is the unit cost? I got 282.38. What is that unit cost? Is that feet?
That'd be feet. So on odd shaped.
I have 75 feet of frontage. That 282.38 feet is the largest portion of my property, because I have five sides. So you picked the farthest, the most advanced line you can to charge me for it.
So the way that the assessments are determined on odd shaped lots, it's the average of the sides and the average of the area. So if you have, you know, a pie shaped lot and you've got a little small area in the front, it's not just the front footage, it's the average of, of all of that. And that's why there's large lots over on Circle Drive. And that's why yours is the way it is, is because it's, it's based on the average area and the average size, side lot line of that lot.
And I believe I'm probably the one in the corner, right?
Let me look here. You're in the northwest corner?
Yep.
And it kind of drops down?
Yep.
Yep, that's yours.
So tell me what's going to happen there.
So most likely you have a lift pump for your drain field currently.
In my house.
Yep, and it pumps it out. You'll have to continue to do that. We got the sewer as deep as we could by coming from Pine over through there, but you'll likely have to keep that in order to get it to the, to the street. We can take elevations to see where that's at, but your driveway, as you know, it, it drops down. I don't think we'll be able to get gravity from, from there to, you know, from the basement into, into the sewer, just because of where it's at.
How many people here would like to have my taxes? I pay $3,800, $3,900 a year and I'm going to add how much more?
Probably two grand at that price.
Yep, a year. Have some of you people from my neighbors think about me. I can't afford that.
None of us can.
Thank you. Your two minutes are up, Joe. Would anyone else like to speak?
Terry Wazlin, 14834, Circle Drive. And I know you don't have an easy job. This is not a fun experience to go through for any of us, us or you guys either. I just have some questions. I know that they've been surveying on the inside of the circle. I live on the east side of the circle. They've been surveying on the west side of my house. They've been surveying on the east side of my house.
Yes.
What is the plan? What directions is that going to come from for me?
So it would come from the back. Let me just get to it. So the sewer would come off of, you know where the old overpass used to come?
Yep.
Yep. So we'd have, in order to get the proper depth to serve that area, we've got to come basically where the four wheelers run back there. We'd have to come back through there and then one of those lots, we'd be getting an easement across to bring it over to the center of, of Circle Drive. And then we would extend the sewer around Circle Drive both north and south from, from that location. So it would have basically sewer on both sides for a stretch of it until we bring it over to, to Circle.
Okay. You know, we're not opposed to city services. It's the money that's the problem for everyone. I'm just wondering if there's any kind of creative way that we can reduce this somewhat for the people here? And, you know, it's hard for us to look at the money that the federal government is pouring out everywhere. And, and there's new trucks here, there's new services there everywhere, and yet we're not, we're not seeing any of that, except, you know, we do like to have the new snowpiles and such in the community. But if there would just be some creative financial arrangement that would help some of these people out, that would be so nice. The other thing is this directional drilling, you know, isn't there some way that you can make an appeal to the, the board, the state board that does that? There's got to be situations where that's the only way they can probably get to different areas. So I would have loved to explore that, because if the directional drilling would certainly mitigate some of the hassles with all existing.
Thank you, Terry.
Strinkling systems and everything that's going on there. So, you know, I understand the difficulty here, but let's try and think of some creative financial ways to somehow do this. We're not asking for, you know, just because we're complaining. I know the other parts of the city had to go through this and they had to pay their thing.
Sorry, your time's up, Terry.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Brenda McMahon on Circle Drive, 14752. A quick question. He brought up surveying and all that. There's orange sticks in the middle part of Circle Drive, you know, because it's got the middle section and the outer section. What does it mean when you have an orange stick in your yard?
So the orange stick is basically a survey point. We take electronic shots out there to know what the X, Y, and Z distance, so the left, the right in elevation. And basically that's so that we can get on the same location every single time. So when we survey it today, we can get back on those same coordinates in the summer during construction. That's really all it is, is the reference point.
I was just making sure if it's a fire hydrant or not. Okay, thank you.
John McMahon, Circle Drive. When Terry brought up a good point, instead of tearing up the streets for us, did they even think of going around the backside of us going to the north and then west? That's an alley, it's an alley back there, but there's no road or anything. Did they ever think of doing something like that, where you wouldn't be tearing up the streets?
We, we did. We still get into the situation that that south leg doesn't have enough depth. So we, we still have to get through over to Circle Drive somehow to get that south leg served. So it, to try to minimize how much pipe we put in the ground and minimize the cost, at some point, we got to get back over to the street side in order to get that pipe into, to serve those folks on the south.
I just thought it'd be a lot cheaper to go around the backside. It's just dirt and a couple of trees instead of tearing up the road and.
Would anyone else like to speak? We'll close this part of the public hearing at 8:29. Who's the wish of the council?
Does this require a 5/8 vote then?
5/8 vote, that's correct, because there's over 35% petition.
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022-16, order in public improvement 397, Circle Drive.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Discussion.
There was a gentleman who probably wanted to come to the podium again. He had his hand up, but we just kind of didn't see him.
Sorry?
I'll be brief. Just asking, with these people from Gale, how many people signed up for this, for the project? Were there one or two people that were in this Circle Drive? I mean, we didn't, I didn't know about the petition or whatever, anything was happening until I saw people putting stakes in. We didn't even know, people in our area didn't even know that this was going to happen. It's like it came off to the side. So I'm just curious to see, is it one person that needed, that wanted it? Then we all have to do that? I, you know? And then the other thing is, I have, you know where my, my property is located and I got that steep. Are you coming with the pipes, are you coming from the front of the driveway to put the pipes in? Is that what you're saying?
The pipes would be in the front, yes.
And then they're going to go down, on my driveway, it slopes down probably six feet, don't you think?
Between, I'd say about four, but yeah, it goes down quite a bit.
And then it has to go underneath. And again, my, my well and my septic system are in the back part of my property. That's another addition that I have to add onto my costs. Just like these gentlemen have been saying, gosh, you just, I probably got 200.
I know we were over 35%. Do you remember the percentage?
It was over 35, it was like 35.8 or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. So.
So over a third of the property owners requested it.
Pardon?
Over a third, over 35% of the property owners in the project area signed a petition requesting it.
So that would be what, there are 17 people that are 35?
And it's based on assessable footage. So if an individual owns a bigger lot, they've got more assessable footage than somebody that says, has a 20-foot lot or something like that. It's based on the assessable footage and it was over that 35%. To answer your question in regards to the timing, this is the first that you've heard of it, and that's typically how it goes. We'll bring in a petition. We don't know exactly the best way to serve that, that area. And so the council will perceive the petition and order in a feasibility report. So we'll look at it, get surveyed and start figuring out the best way to serve that area. And that's what generates the, the feasibility report and, and cost estimates and such. We'll present that to the council and at that point is when they call for the public hearing, which is this here, for the folks to learn about the project, what the project entails and, and kind of get an understanding for it. Otherwise, we don't have estimates, we don't have numbers. We're just talking about bringing it somewhere, but everybody wants to know, what does it cost? That's really the basis of a lot of the, the discussion. And without a feasibility report, we can't, we can't do that, so.
Unfortunately, some people didn't get theirs until today.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President, looks like there's 21 households that are in this project.
Could be, I didn't count, but.
Doesn't matter.
I, I will abstain, because I have property on Circle Drive. I will abstain from the vote.
Did you want to say something before as well?
No.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, just, the one thought I have is I, you know, I, I went through that a couple of years ago. And I was unthrilled about it. But it's just a matter of time for our entire city. And it's bad timing for the people that are sitting here. But as leaders in the city, it's our, like Raquel said earlier, it's our job to get these things done. And I, we don't want to impose these things on you. That's not what we're here for. That's not why we run. We run to try to do good things, not bad things. So, you know, it's, it's painful to see a lot of people that you know out here in the, in the crowd that you've known for many years, to try to figure out what the right thing is. But once again, we're put up here to represent the whole city. And if, if it happens out in either one of those neighborhoods where somebody's septic goes bad, what are you going to do? Just run it out there for one house? This is more financial sense this way than it is any other way. And I know that doesn't fly with any of you people out there, but. That's all.
It's not just for one house, it's for other houses when their, their systems fail as well. Call a roll, please.
Lundberg? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee? Yes. Hansen?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Harry.
Number three, resolution 2022-17, order in public improvement 390, Fourth Street East, and call for plans and specifications. Adopt.
So the final public hearing that we have this evening is for Fourth Street Southeast. This is City Project 390. To give you an idea where we're looking at for our project, the south end of the project is US Highway 10 overpass extending all the way up past Highway 27 up to, just shy of First Avenue Northeast, along Fourth Street. I should mention, we do have the publication or the affidavit of publication as well as the affidavit for mailing for this one as well. So moving on to the project need, again, the area that we reviewed is from Highway 10 up to First Street Northeast. This does have a PESA rating of four, which indicates structural improvement is required. We did install the water main in the 1970s, that's six inch cast iron. We do have multiple water services that freeze in that area as well as multiple broken curb stops. Sanitary sewer is a mix of between eight and 10-inch clay pipe that was installed in 1913 and 1968 respectively. We do have significant inflow and infiltration and we do have a sewer, or shallow sewer main, which we'll see in some of the pictures coming up here. Storm sewer in that stretch was installed in 1968. Looking at a street view of the, of the area, you can see the, the pavement's cracking up there, indicative of that, that PESA rating. So this is the televising that we conducted in that stretch of the sewer, sanitary sewer, and I'll go through these relatively quickly, because there's quite a few of them that are consistent with that. We've got root intrusion on the left there, flat grade, so the water's ponding. Whenever you have standing water like that, that's where the solids continue to accumulate and then back up the sewer and cause issues. Service line on the right, you'll see the root intrusions on that one. Again, this is root intrusion, hammer tap, you can see where it's broken, and that's where the roots tend to come in, into the service and then cause blockages. Again, some more roots causing issues there. Offset joints, again, that's where debris tends to, to hang up and cause issues. Looking at the inflow, if you can see in the middle of the screen, the water right up in this area, I'm not sure if you can see that, but the water in this area is just pouring out of that service. It's clean water. The guys kind of sat there for a while to, to watch it and it's just clean water coming out. Looking at pipe sag, so this is the way that the, the pipe is supposed to look. You can see where the, the channel is at, at the bottom. And the next picture here, this is where the pipe, you can see it's obviously quite a bit fuller and that's where the pipe is sagging, holds that, that debris and starts to cause block, blockages. Again, pipe sag, this is where the camera's actually half submerged. The camera itself is supposed to be in the middle of the pipe and so this is half full of water where the water's just sitting there accumulating solids. This is an old hammer tap, again, and pipe sag. You can see the water line kind of in the middle of the screen, that's the white on the bottom, up on top, this is where someone used basically a hammer to try to add a service to it. So it's a, it's a broken pipe where water can flow into, roots can get in, debris can get in, that type of stuff. More roots in the stretch, more roots in there as well. Again, roots and ice. You can see the frost on the bottom of that, or on the sides of that, that pipe. This is the one that surprised me the most. It's a short video, but about three quarters of the way through at the end, you'll see the, the ice accumulation in there. Apologize for the color, it's pink, otherwise something was wrong with the, the camera color settings. They ultimately got that fixed. But you can see as we go through, you'll start to see, right about there is where, right at the end of it, you can start seeing that ice accumulation on it just to the left up here. Which leads me to, to indicate, again, shallow sewer, as well as a buildup. And then that's where the, the ice started to build up, so potentially causing blockages in that, in that pipe. Which is a big concern. causing blockages in that, in that pipe, which is a big concern for us. So, the proposed improvements on this stretch, we're looking at an eighteen-inch sanitary sewer. If you recall, the other stretches, we were looking at eight-inch, we're looking at oversizing this, it'll be one of our main trunk lines. Sanitary sewer service is stubbed out to the property line, six-inch water main up until, up until Fifth Avenue, and then after Fifth Avenue would become a, a ten-inch water line at that point. Water service is stubbed out to the property line, we'll have storm sewer improvements, forty-four-foot urban section with curb and gutter, much like it is there today, ten-foot, or ten-ton pavement section, so that the larger trucks can use that as, as one of the main routes. It is a county road, so we do anticipate the higher traffic volumes in through there. By doing this project, as well as the eighteen-inch sanitary sewer, we do have the ability to eliminate two lift stations in the future, one on Eighth Avenue, and then one in the northeast on Fifth Avenue. The area here highlighted is the, the project corridor, the yellow is where sidewalks would be proposed. We are looking at sidewalks on both sides up until Lyons Park. You'll notice in the middle there, by the old fairgrounds, between Seventh and Eighth Avenue, there's a stretch where we do not have it highlighted. That stretch does have sidewalk on the east side, but it's on private property, so we can't really consider that public sidewalk, and so that's why we will be connecting up to it, but it's not in the public right away, so that's why that one's not highlighted there. We are proposing to add it on the west side of that stretch, where it is not right now, so we'd be adding that, and then extending that from, from that stretch all the way on the west side, past Sanados up to the bridge. The bridge overpass does have sidewalk on it, and so we'd be, we'd be looking at extending and connecting up to, up to that point. On the east side by Lyons Park, it would stop at the park and not extend over to, over to the highway. Another thing to, to mention on this stretch, one of the changes that we're proposing at Fifth Avenue Southeast, this would become a four-way stop. We've got a number of vehicle crashes in that, in that area, so we'd be looking at adding this as a four-way stop, both, well, Fifth Avenue as well as Fourth Street. The sidewalk, or not the sidewalk, the curb and gutter would be moved out to, closer to the, to the driving lane, to help improve visibility at that location, so at that intersection itself, we would have no parking, because it would be extended out, I think it was six feet is what we moved it out, to try to improve that, that visibility in that area. We did do turning movements to make sure that, you know, somebody pulling a, a boat or a camper or something like that can still make that turn, and that's what helped indicate where those, those curb lines should be. So looking at costs, construction, so these are, these are feasibility numbers, and we'll get to that in a little bit. So the construction costs are three-point-nine million dollars, contingency just under four-hundred thousand dollars. Engineering, seven-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-three for a total project cost of five-point-one million dollars. The assessments are at twenty-five-point-four percent, so one-million-three-hundred-thousand-one-hundred-seventeen dollars. City picking up thirty-two-point-eight percent, so one-million-six-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-one dollars. This is a county road, so the county has indicated their participation in some of the items. Again, these are feasibility numbers, two-million-one-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand-forty-one dollars for a total project cost of five-point-one million. We did update the estimate just last month, after having conversations with suppliers in regards to pipe prices and such, and, and current and more up-to-date bid prices, so the updated estimate is actually six-million-five-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars. The assessments would still stay the same at one-point-three million, but the city's costs and the county's costs would go up respectively, based on the items that we, we saw. So, the new estimate there is six-point-five million dollars for this, for this stretch. Looking at the assessment rates, we've seen a lot of these previously, but I'll run through them quick. Thirty-two-foot urban section, so in a residential area, if we put in a forty-four, forty-four-foot wide road, a residential would only need thirty-two, so that's where they get charged for the thirty-two. If it's commercial, they would get charged for the thirty-six, so there's the different rates in there. So the thirty-two-foot urban section front footage would be thirty-five dollars, side footage is half the price, at seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Again, that's only up to the side footage of a hundred and fifty feet, after that, it's, it's the front footage rate. Thirty-six-foot wide urban section in the front is thirty-nine dollars, thirty-seven cents. Sanitary sewer replacement, thirty-two dollars per foot. Six-inch service line replacement is eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Four-inch service line replacement is seven-hundred. For, a new four-inch service line is eleven-hundred dollars. Water main replacement is thirty-two dollars per foot. A one-inch water line replacement is seven-hundred, excuse me, a water, one-inch water line replacement is seven-hundred dollars, and a new one-inch water line is nineteen-hundred dollars. Storm sewer on residential is nineteen dollars per square foot. The larger the lot, the more storm water that comes off of it. Commercial stormwater is at thirty dollars, or thirty cents per square foot. Commercial lots have more impervious coverage and more runoff than residential, that's why you see the two different rates on that. So with the project, we do intend to sell general obligation bonds. If the council approves this segment, it may be combined with other projects. Property owners who are disabled, sixty-five years of older, older, may apply for deferment, as well as Minnesota National Guard or other military reserves, meaning Section one-ninety-point-zero-five, subdivision five B or C. Looking at the project timeline, tonight, obviously February twenty-second, we'd be designing February, March, advertising in March, open bids March thirty-first, construction in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three, and then construction completing in twenty-twenty-three. This is an optimistic schedule, I'll be the first to admit. Realistically, we would start construction in twenty-twenty-two and finish in twenty-twenty-three. I don't anticipate bids on March thirty-first, simply because we do have plans into the, to the state to get their review. We'll have to get their comments back before we can actually approve those and get those, get those completed and turned around. So realistically, I expect us to see a July timeframe for, for bidding that, just knowing how long the state takes for, for reviews in order to do that. So I would expect a fall and next spring construction on this project. Let me look, see for my notes here. Yeah, that's all that I had. You'll notice later on in the list, if we do move forward with this project, we would be looking at some items, as I indicated before, we, we reached out to suppliers, there's about a four-month lead time on pipe, six-month lead time on one of the other items, which are the butterfly valves for our wrought water main, and so we'd be looking at, at that portion of it if this, if this does move forward.
I have a question, as I noticed that I was looking through some of the cost per property.
Yep.
Some of them looked like they were maybe only forty-foot lots, but yet there was a stub on each one. Can they build on forty feet?
So, most of this area is a, is R2, so the minimum lot width, if, for a defined lot that's already there today is forty-two feet. If a property or owner owns multiple lots, they would be able to do a, a lot line adjustment to get to that forty-two foot. We looked at it, when we looked at them that were vacant, we looked at sixty-foot, because that's what the code says, even though they could do a forty-two, forty-two-foot wide lot if they wanted to, but realistically, sixty-foot is what we looked at to base it off of.
So it wasn't, maybe I read it wrong, I thought that, I saw several in a row that were forty, that each had a water and a sewer.
If it has a, if it has a hu- a house on it now, then yes, forty-foot, those are common in that area.
But if they're empty, then we did it based on sixty?
Then it would be based on sixty, yeah, yeah.
Would anyone like to speak?
My name is Donna Walvagel, I live at seven-ten Fourth Street Southeast. I got this paper, and the assessment, I've got a forty-five-foot lot, the assessment says I have to pay thirty-seven-thousand-twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Yours was an error. I did speak with, I think it was your son, but yes.
Well, am I gonna get a different paper to let me know what it is?
I definitely can, and I think I gave you the updated amount, yeah.
He did, but I just wanted, wanted to make sure that what this was on here.
Yeah.
I almost had a heart attack.
Apologize for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Charlie Martin, I live at eight-fourteen Fourth Street Southeast, and I wish mine was a mistake, mine is thirty-five thousand roughly for my area there. I did turn in a petition, my neighbors signed it also. As far as the sidewalk project, I know it's a public or a private sidewalk, and I appreciate, I've met with Greg a number of times, and he explained things to me, but it's a beautiful sidewalk on the east side of the road, which goes all the way to Lyons Park, and that's the side people walk on, because they're going to the park. Hardly anybody comes along the street and walks on our side of the street. There's nothing to go to up by the bridge. I, I just think it's a, a waste of money to put a sidewalk all the way up that side. Is there any way we could take that money and lower our assessments? Like I said, mine's thirty-five thousand. My neighbor is eighty-seven, retired, his is over fourteen. My neighbor to the south, she's a young mother with three little kids, hers is over twenty-thousand dollars. And that's a hardship for all of us, and I, I just, the sidewalk doesn't seem necessary. I know Greg said they did a study on the traffic on that, number of thousand cars every day. Did they do a study on foot traffic?
Short answer is no. So when MINDOC does the traffic counts, it's only for vehicles is what it, they've got little tubes out there, and that's what it counts.
Okay.
And, and that's how we base off of where to put the sidewalk, you know, we look at where people are going to, where they're coming from. Sanados is a destination, you know, in terms of folks walking and, and such.
Not many people walk to Sanados, I mean, I mean.
Yeah.
Or from, I mean, unless they're trying to get away. I don't know, but, I mean, I've lived there forty-five years, and the number of people I've seen walk up to the bridge is minimal. And as far as the street project, I can appreciate that, most of those pictures are in front of my house, I think, that has frozen up so many times, and my sewer backs up into the basement, which it did a couple of weeks ago, again. I had to get a couple plumbers over there on a Sunday morning, they were very nice about coming. I don't know if you guys know Mike Lerkey and Chris Fusi, they came on a Sunday morning, Mike was out fishing, he closed up his house and came and helped me. He couldn't get it open, so I had to get Chris there with a jet. And then, you know, thanks to Wayne, my neighbor talked to Wayne, and we were able to get the city to get the truck over there to clean out that frozen pipe. I mean, they were there within an hour, that was great. For some reason, that week, they had only jetted that area one time. Usually they do it two or three times, because it does freeze up, so I understand that project. My man, thirty-five thousand, that's, you work all your life to save money to retire, and then now, and the fifteen-year deferment, I like that idea, but four percent interest, I figured it out, that's another eleven-thousand dollars, onto the thirty-five. Even though you get lower each year, I don't know, it's a lot of money, so I'm against a sidewalk. I'm kinda for the street project, I guess. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Lisa, L-E-S-A Harmon, I'm at five-hundred Fourth Street Southeast. My neighbor to the south informed me that probably within the last twenty years, I believe, that the sewer and water pipes to the houses have already been replaced, so we're wondering, do they have to be replaced again?
So what we do, when we go through and we do the construction, we keep an eye to see what, what's there existing. If there's already PVC pipe there, somebody put the expense to, to replace that sewer line, then we don't charge them for that. We still replace it, because it's gonna get dug, dug up with the, the water and the sewer that, that goes through, but we don't charge you for that, because you've already paid for the, the pipe itself, the blacktop, because when you, when you replace it, not with our project, but when you replace it on your own, then the property owner's responsible for the curb, the sidewalk, the, the blacktop, all of that stuff, and so we don't feel right charging you again for, for that service line if you've already done it. So we do keep an eye out for that. We did that on Third Street, where some of the folks have already replaced their, their sewer and their water, and so we keep an eye for that. We also look through the, the building files to see if the permit's been pulled for that, and, and which ones have it. But, you know, with this one, right now, we just have everybody with the, with a new service, and then as the project goes through, we, we keep an eye for that and, and make notes and, and update it based on that.
Okay, so you'll be able to tell?
Yep.
Okay, because she did say that there used to be iron pipes there, and they're not anymore, so.
Yeah, that's what she was saying.
More than likely be PVC.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Charlie Martin again. Did the federal government pass an infrastructure bill? It seemed like I heard that, and.
I believe they did. It wouldn't qualify for this, it's more towards roads and bridges.
But isn't, isn't this infrastructure, I mean?
It is, but the underground, I don't believe qualifies for it.
You don't believe, or you know for sure? I'm sorry, but I, I mean.
I don't think they have the grant stuff written yet to, to show it.
Is there something we could check on, though, is possibly helping us out?
We will. I, I'm not optimistic, but we will check on it, yes.
Appreciate that, okay, or if there's any other avenues we could pursue. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Go ahead.
Dan Wire, do you want the address of the property I'm talking about, or where I live?
Where you live, please.
One-two-seven-two-one Fan Taylor Road, Roylton.
Thank you.
I own a house on, on this section here. I just wanted to clarify a couple things that I just heard. The repairs, or, I've got three assessments here totaling seventeen-thousand dollars, so the lot apparently is in three pieces.
Probably.
So am I paying for a stub for three different lots?
So, do you have the, do you have it in front of you there?
Yes.
So, if you look on the, the easiest one is the sanitary sewer service.
Sanitary sewer main?
Yep, nope, not the main. The main will be basically your front footage, because all of those are rectangular lots, but you look, it's the four-inch sanitary sewer service.
Okay.
If you've got more than one, then there'll be multiple in there, but if there's only one, then it's just one lot that's, or one stub that's going out.
Okay, so I've got, I've got seven-hundred dollars three times, but one has a notation of one behind it. What does that mean? We're under units?
So, the units.
Or, or so is this just saying seven-hundred dollars, but I don't have a unit?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, answers that question, thank you. I lost my notes. The sidewalk, I'm opposed. I don't think we need it there either. Oh, on the sidewalk, does that, if you cut across the property, is, now, now that property belongs to the city, or that's right-of-way anyway?
It's existing right-of-way.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, answers that. We have had trouble with roots in the systems where I am too. We've replaced the pipe from the house as far as we could on our property without digging up the street. What, what's involved that? We didn't dig up the street.
So, did you get to basically the curb line, or where did you get to?
Well, I wasn't there when they did the work, I was a local plumber.
It really depends on how far they, they went. You know, if they basically went to the sidewalk, that's where we're gonna essentially tie into, because the right-of-way is just on the backside of the sidewalk. So if they're, well, I guess you don't have sidewalk in that area, but if you're about five, ten feet from the back of curb, because of the slope, that's about the same spot that we're gonna tie into, so unfortunately, you would be charged for a sewer service at that point, because from there into the street has never been replaced.
Oh.
But we'll keep an eye out for it, once we get through construction to see. If it was replaced to the main, it'd be an easy.
Okay.
We wouldn't charge you at that point.
And if I'm understanding this right, you're bringing new water service into the house?
To the property line.
To the pro, to the property line?
Yes.
But if there's, there's existing pipe there, you, you just?
We replace it.
You replace it to the property line?
From the main to the property line. It's roughly thirty feet from center line of road is where the right-of-way is at. We bring it from there to the right-of-way, which is thirty-three feet from center.
So what's, what's existing in the house, if it's bad, that's my problem?
That's correct. Anything on private property is, is the homeowner's responsibility for the water service.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? This is for the Fourth Street project?
Fourth Street, yes.
And I understand this is for the Fourth Street project, but I think it's for all of us. When you're, with these estimates, I mean, with petroleum going way up and pipes are made out of plastic, do you, you know, what if it went a lot higher? Do we all get assessed more then?
Short answer is, it's ultimately up to the council, but in the past, they've said no. And we can go back to the estimates and such. Looking at the policy, a third here, a third here, and the city pays a third, we're already at more than that. In the past, the city has kept this, the preliminary assessments at or below what we've estimated. And then the city just takes on, if it goes over, they take on the responsibility. If it goes less, then they share it. So I would anticipate these numbers to be where they're at. Like we said, on the Fourth Street project, we did an updated cost estimate. The preliminary estimates were on that five-point-one million. Our new estimate is six-point-five, but the assessments stayed the same. I anticipate to be around that six-point-five, but the assessments are going to stay the same. So if that answers your question for the other ones, it'd be, I anticipate those to be the final ones.
All right. Six months from now, who knows what the prices could be? And we're already pushing the limits for everybody now, so thank you.
Yep.
We'll close our hearing at nine oh one. What is the wish of the council?
I will note, Mr. President, that with this being a staff initiated, we will need a seven-eighths vote to move this project forward.
A move to adopt resolution, to make sure I'm on the right one. Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-seventeen, public improvement three ninety.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion.
Mr. President, if I could. Greg, I can see, you know, with that road going through past the airport turnoff, opportunity for a lot of growth out in that area.
True.
Which I would think would bring more traffic, more foot traffic. But that need for that sidewalk on the west side, is that imminent to this project? Only, the only reason I ask is if we have it on the other side of the road and that goes up to Lyons Park and gets to the bridge, that would be my only question is, do we really need it on the other side?
So when we look at sidewalks, we look at a couple of things. Destinations where people going to, coming from, as well as the traffic volumes. The traffic volumes on Fourth Street do warrant having it on both sides of that road. It's not as high as some of our other roads, but it's high enough where it's not very easy to get across on both. And that's why we have, we're proposing to have sidewalks on both sides of that stretch.
Thank you.
Call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries.
Petition opposing installation of sidewalk, eight hundred block, receive.
Just receiving.
Of the.
That's part of the project and we'd just be receiving it this evening.
Okay. What is the wish of the council?
A move to receive the petition opposing the installation of sidewalk.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Luddings, evidence locker, elite fence and deck, police annex, award. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Tonight, I'm before you to request authorization to purchase an install fencing. This would create a secure evidence locker inside the police department storage building on West River Road. The evidence locker would be used to secure large items of evidence and/or items that could be hazardous. We're pretty limited on our space right now at the police department in our evidence locker. So this will give us additional space that we could keep larger items. I received two estimates. The first from Elite Fence and Deck in Brainerd for four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. A second estimate for Boundary Fence of Rice, that estimate was five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. I would be requesting authorization to purchase the evidence locker from Elite Fence and Dock of Brainerd at a cost of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Funds for the purchase of the locker are included in the twenty-twenty-two police department budget.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Surveillance system, all state communications, police annex, award.
Again, Mr. President, this would be related to the police department storage building on West River Road. I would be proposing to install a surveillance system from all state communications at a cost of fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. The system would connect directly to the Morrison County Sheriff's Office facility, which is on the same piece of land in that complex. They currently have a system in place at the sheriff's office, on the sheriff's office portion of the facility. I've worked with Sheriff Larson and Amy Mittendorf, the IT director, and they would allow us to connect to their system. This would allow for the dispatch to have twenty-four-hour surveillance of the whole complex, the sheriff's portion and our portion. This would also be used to secure our evidence area, so it would be internal and external surveillance. The agreement would be, it's part of the county's, there's a, let's see here. We'd be piggybacking off of the county's purchase agreement through all state communications. And again, it would be for a cost of fourteen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase as part of their cooperative, trying to explain their cooperative purchasing agreement from Morrison County.
Thank you. What is the wish of the council?
I move to award.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Lildegren. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Twenty-four-inch MJ butterfly valves, Corin Maine Water, award. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. As part of the Fourth Street.
If you'd like to speak, please step out in the hallway.
As part of the Fourth Street Southeast project, we would be installing a raw water line on Fourth Street Southeast. If you recall, that raw water line was a twenty-four-inch line. We did have conversations with the suppliers and they are indicating that it's a six-month lead time. So in order to minimize any disruptions with the product, we are asking the council to approve the purchase of two twenty-four-inch butterfly valves from Corin Maine in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars. We did get quotes for both, for those two from Corin Maine, as well as from Cota Supply Group. Cota Supply Group came in at twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Corin Maine is at twenty-one thousand dollars for those two. These do meet the requirements of the, the rest of the project would be, which are Buy American, so the American-made products, we wanted to make sure that that met that. So we're looking for approval this evening in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars. Then that would be charged to the project.
What is the wish of the council?
A move to award.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hold business, public improvement three ninety-three, Fourteenth Street Southeast. Service and/or utility improvements. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll kind of touch on number one and number two at the same time. So we're talking in regards to Fourteenth Street Southeast. We discussed this as well last year. We're looking at extending Fourteenth Street about six hundred and fifty feet to the south. There's a new apartment complex that's being proposed to be built over there. The estimate that we're looking at is about four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for that stretch. Fifty percent of that would be assessed to the property and then fifty percent to the left, fifty percent to the right. But the total project cost that we're looking at is four hundred and sixty-two thousand. So this evening, we're asking the council, and this first one, to order the feasibility report and the second one, accept the feasibility report and call for that public hearing.
What is the wish of the council?
I might make a motion to read, resolution twenty-two-two-dash-eighteen, or feasibility report.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lildegren, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Last I heard, they weren't building that complex because it was too expensive.
They put it on hold.
They put it on hold.
Okay.
Till the spring. I've had conversation with the developer over the last couple of months that it's been there. And they're waiting till the spring to build because lumber costs were really big. Yes.
Okay.
So it's there. We just have to bring it back because we're outside of the timeframe that we can approve that project.
Okay.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two-dash-nineteen, accept feasibility report and call for public hearing. We just went over it. Greg explained it. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-two-dash-nineteen, accept feasibility report and call for public hearing.
Second.
Everybody wants to get out of here.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starley. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Starlee?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution two thousand twenty-two-dash-twenty, approve plans and specifications and call for bids. Materials, public improvement three ninety. Adopt.
Thank you. So this is the Fourth Street Southeast portion of it. As I mentioned, there's quite a lead time on some of the material. And so we're asking the council to, and I apologize, I've got them back in my desk, but approve the plans and specs for the material on the project. Again, it would meet all the Buy American requirements for that project. But we want to get ahead of the game and get the material ordered so that when the contractor's on board, we can get as much done on that project as possible. So this evening, we're asking the council to approve that, resolution twenty-two-two-dash-twenty, and that would be charged to the project.
What is the wish of the council?
A move to adopt resolution twenty-two-twenty, approve plans and specifications, and call for bids.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Lildegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starlee?
Yes.
Carries.
New business personnel, letter of retirement, Lori Casella, finance officer, receive and place on file.
Nope.
Nope. Yes.
Guess you have to stay.
I'd like to motion.
Didn't think we were going to pass that, did you?
We table this one until twenty-twenty-five.
Just need a motion to receive, please.
I'll make a motion to receive.
Second.
Update position description, finance officer, post and advertise, approve. John.
Thank you, Council President. We do have Annie on as well. Let me see if I can.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent. Okay, so good evening. With Lori's resignation, unfortunately, we will be needing to post this position. We have updated the job description and it'll remain a pay grade sixteen. It'll stay salary exempt, so we are requesting to post it internally and externally simultaneously. As there, it's been approved by the supervisor's union, that we do that as well. Yeah. We can post it internally and externally.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve and update the position description for financial officer to post and advertise.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Lildegren. Any discussion?
Well, I don't see anything in here about coming in on Saturdays and Sundays trying to catch up. It is a salary position. I'll train him, man.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Administrative specialist, position description, points, pay grade, and post, approve.
Thank you so much. So approved from the twenty-two-dish discussions, we asked for an administrative specialist list in City Hall. This person will help customer service, communications across all city departments. It'll allow for more balanced distribution of workload and delegation of duties. So with this, we reviewed it at heart, need five points, which places it in a specialist pay grade of four. We are looking to get approval for that job description, the point placement, and then to post internally with the ASB union, followed by a public review.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Goshick. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Engineering technician, post and advertise. Annie.
I can.
Thank you. So this position is open for discussion planning within the engineering department. And with the amount of projects that we have this year, it falls within our budget. It was not specifically requested. Greg, would you like to touch on this for one minute?
Yeah. So as you are aware, we've got quite a healthy construction season scheduled for twenty-twenty-two. Same thing for twenty-twenty-three. We're anticipating Fourth Street Northeast in twenty-twenty-three. And just looking at the number of projects that we have recently done, what we've got coming up in the foreseeable future, and then after that, we do have the need for an additional engineering individual down there. And so we're looking at engineering tech, looking at succession planning in regards to the engineering department to be able to fulfill that. As you know, when we work on projects, those are billed out to the project through assessments and other stuff. And so we feel that with the budget that we've got for twenty-twenty-two and moving forward, we'd be able to absorb that into it. So with the council's approval, we'd like to post that for an additional engineering technician for the engineering department.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve posting and advertising for an engineering technician.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Mayor Zilka. Questions? You just mean hours will be billable to the projects?
That is correct, yes. Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Recommendation of interview committee, Calvin Cheetah Patrol Officer, accepting a point. Not sure who's going on this one.
Thank you. So recently, we were doing interviews for the patrol officer position. Since Josh Berger was appointed to the police officer investigator position, that leads in over patrol officers. So myself, Sergeant Naborsky, Hagen, and Officer Dora conducted nine interviews of ten applicants. And through that, we are recommending Calvin Cheetah to be appointed as the patrol officer.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it. I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Lildegren, second by Councilmember Goshick. Any discussion?
Is he from Pierce?
He is.
Was his uncle the sheriff?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Good kid.
Ordinance number 29-7 series, amend city code, chapter 2, section 2.01, ward boundaries. Introduce. John.
Thank you, Council President. I did hand out before the meeting the update to this. It was... That was given to us from our city attorney earlier today. So that's why it's coming out. Section 5 was a piece that was just in error put into the ordinance. Does not need to be included. So as you recall, based on our discussion, we're looking at shutting the boundaries for our wards, for Ward 3 to now encompass parts of the east side from Broadway, south, and west of First Street Southeast. Everything that's in that corner and then everything west of the river. Wards 1 and 2 will be split at Fourth Avenue. So there will be a piece of west of First Street, north of Broadway, that will be in Ward 1 because it's still south of Fourth Avenue. And then everything east of Highway 10 is going to be encompassed into... And 371 is going to be encompassed into Ward 1 as well. There is no population, there are no residential properties north of the area around Walmart at this time. So north of that split of 371 and 10. But in case of future annexation, it's that would be... Those would be incoming into that first ward. Then Ward 2 is just now shorter, smaller, the area north of Fourth Avenue and everything west of the Highway 10 and 371.
We just need a motion to introduce, correct? That's it.
And I will make a motion to introduce ordinance number 29-7 series.
I'll second that. Oh, do we need to second on that? Not an introduction, no.
City council reports and cities' affords, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Any announcements? And next, we... Tonight, we have three closed sessions. We will be taking up each closed session separately in the following order. First, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C to determine asking price or develop or consider offers or counter offers for the real property described as 613th Street Southwest. Second, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3C to determine asking price or develop or consider offers or counter offers for the real property described as parcel number 48.6522.000. And third, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05 subdivision 3B under the attorney-client privilege to consider pending and threatened litigation involving coed shields and 17 Fifth Street Northeast. After each closed session, the council will return to open session, entertain any motions related to the previous closed session, and then entertain a motion for the next closed session or for overall adjournment. So we are to... Item number one under a closed session. Determine the asking price or develop or consider offers or counter offers for real property described as 613th Street Southwest.